Second meeting of January, Martin for good day. And I would ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business after the pledge is the approval of the minutes of the January 6th meeting.
Well, I think I've run it online. Trying to get them to go through.
These are online now?
No, they were sent to me.
Oh, it got me all excited just.
Then take lunch.
So I'm starting to deal with it morning and night.
Motion to approve. Okay, got motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 6th meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Motion passed. the council. Okay, motion a second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion passed. These are already signed by our council members. And if some of you are wondering why all it's every time I go through these, there's a little pause here is because I'm checking to make sure that what is written on your agenda, the agenda you're seeing and what is written on our claim sheets is exactly the same. And I can say that that has been back as honorable, never had a time, I don't think, when they weren't exactly the same. In years past, we have had times where we had discrepancies, so I still check.
Motion to approve, favor.
Okay, our motion and a second to approve the payroll, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Is you aye, Steve?
Aye.
You aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Approval of early claims.
January 13th.
It goes 10:00, 13:00?
Yeah. One on 3:30 and one on 4:00.
One of them is in the amount of $17,906.85 and the other is in the amount of $14,352.86.
They are the two separate.
So they had some claims, you just don't worry?
Well, it's not just them, it's different departments bringing them in like, you know, different times.
Sort of like courthouse has one, then double rated and...
But you can tell that the sewage is sort of, this is a different amount.
Right.
But this is, this is about...
We're good.
You'll do both at the same time?
Yeah, sure, well, made my motion to do both early claims.
Okay, we have motion and seconds to do both early claim sheets. All in favor, please say aye. And our next one is surplus tax, which is much where they totally paid and refunded, in the amount of $2,311.05.
No, I noticed mine, one either out there, sir.
Motion approved. Second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed. I can't get my hand to work right here. Okay, we're down to Carroll County redevelopment claims.
Actually, these aren't, you're really not approving these, you're just approving that I wrote the checks because they're already approved by the redevelopment, but the State Board of Accounts was so adamant that we give every claim to you, so you're not really actually...
We're just saying that you signed the check.
Yeah, we issued those checks.
Motion to approve. Second, all in favor, please say aye. And then we have a replacement check for $178.04. No? Motion to approve the replacement check. Forward. Motion second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed, and we are now down to...
One more early check.
Yeah, we're done, we got $333.30 for First Financial Bank.
That's a credit card.
Credit card?
Credit card early check. It just didn't come in with the others, usually they're all on the same.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed.
What was the $154,000 for?
Sorry?
The $154,000 for Carroll County redevelopment?
Yes.
Those are claims that come to the redevelopment that they've already approved, they're just approving that I did actually write the checks, but they do have the amount on there. I believe for the, I think it's to Regions, if you can read those off. I'm thinking Regions. Two, two Regions, I think, for their bonds.
Was one HWC?
Just two checks, right? Yeah, it's for their bonds with Regions, 2014, 2015 bonds.
Mr. Stoner for the 905, as Carl said, he was available today, so we are ready for Mike Fincher for our EMA director.
Good morning, gentlemen. Just wanted to give you guys the status on where we're at in that. The first thing you should have there is the annual report, it's one of the things on top of the court report that I give you guys, just recap some of the stuff that went through the year. If you have any questions, I could get a chance to review it, feel free to get a little in it.
I like this report because it does about everything you done. I figured it'd be simpler than this, to be honest.
I try and condense it as much as I can. The next thing that I wanted to go over was the cybersecurity stuff that we talked about back in December. You did give me permission to send out that survey to where we believe that as a county we stood in our cybersecurity program. I only received five responses.
Who did you send them to?
Every department. With that, five that responded, we're in the developmental stage, which is a little bit better than what Randy and I actually thought we'd be at, but that's where everybody else sees us at. You also gave Randy the permission to do that baseline phishing security test. He did do it. Just within the courthouse, there was 77 recipients, 16 people clicked on it, two people actually in the data, which means 26% of our staff within the courthouse opened themselves up to the potential cyber mission. Now granted, this is just a test, there wasn't any malware or anything in it, but it just, it's given us a starting point where we need to go. So with that, Randy and I'd like to set up an executive meeting to discuss cybersecurity with you guys a couple of weeks from now, usually on Wednesday or a Friday, which would be easier for Randy because those are the days he's usually here.
Probably do it Friday after work, if that's off, I mean, if that's not delayed.
Like four o'clock?
Yeah. I don't know, Bill, you can treat yourself, you know, man, Friday. I mean, we got keys to the courthouse, we can go on Wednesday.
Or Randy and I are usually in one day, so Wednesday afternoon and a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
I don't think we're going to.
Okay. How about following up?
I can do the Tuesday. Can you do the 12? Are you going on vacation or anything?
Well, I'll check with Randy, see if he can adjust the schedule, the other county said he works full and see if we can do it after hours.
Can we do it by the end of the month? Can we do it 29?
That's fine.
Can you do 29?
Whenever you guys want to do it.
Bill? I think this is kind of important, we got people that think we should do it.
You need to clarify this, it didn't just, wasn't just courthouse.
They said, who he sent to, wait, well, whoever's on the courthouse served, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
Let me put it that way.
Which included the commissioners and the council and other people.
If they use their cameras, I guess, like they're supposed to.
County females.
Thank you, I missed it. Whoever's on the county courthouse served.
Where do we sign, gentlemen?
29. I'll check with Randy, make sure that he's good.
So what time did you say?
It'd be 16:00, or four o'clock in the county.
You're gonna say we have to.
We gotta give them the newspaper money and the cybersecurity. Yes. Well, once I get a confirmed date, I will send the proper numbers over to the...
I'm, I can do that.
You'll do it? Okay.
Yeah.
As long as they get...
Usually it comes around the end for executive session.
Okay. The next thing I want to talk about, there's two grants that are non-matching funds that come open about June timeframe, and they're only open for about three weeks. That's the state homeland security program, also known as SHSP, and then hazard mitigation, one that deals strictly with anything that's dealing with hazardous materials. Since they're non-matching grants, I'd like your guys' permission ahead of time, the reason I'm asking it so far up is because from the time the notice funding opportunity comes open, for me to stand in front of you and say, I want to go for this, this, and this, and get your approval, then go to the council to do the same thing, it's usually opened and gone. It'll be too late for me to apply for those grants. So I'm kind of giving you a heads up, and once it gets closer, when I know possibly that the no-fo's gonna come out, I'll come to you again. But since they're non-matching grants, I was gonna go after some of the stuff that's been listed on the capital improvement plan that we talked about back in April, nothing else that we discussed. Some of those items is what I might go after. Do you need to go after the grant?
Yes, I have motion and a second to pursue grants, opportunities, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
The other thing that you have in front of you is the multi-hazard mitigation program. That's what we did with the grant to update the county's overall multi-hazards that we could be faced with, pulled together, worked with the county government and the incorporated city towns to develop that plan to be approved by FEMA. Why this plan is so important is it needs to be updated every five years. The last one was done in 2010, so we're a little out of that window. But what it does is it opens us up to be eligible for mitigation grants, should they come open. An example I could give you on that, if one of the schools, should they decide to adopt this plan, if they wanted to build a safe room, they would be eligible to apply for it, not saying they're definitely gonna get it, but that they could apply for funding to build a safe room at the school. That's just one example.
I haven't had the opportunity to read it in a while yet.
Well, once, once you guys do get the opportunity to read it, we do need to adopt it. If possible, I'd like to do it by the end of February, the quicker we get it in and back to FEMA, the better off we're gonna be. Friday afternoon, I didn't get a chance to get this copy to you guys ahead of time. Part of the requirements from the state to be eligible for the salary reimbursement is that we meet our county readiness assessment criteria. They changed it up from what they've done in the past years. Used to be a five-page pro, or five-page assessment, now it's a 15-page assessment. I met all the requirements to get salary reimbursement, but they did say there is a lot of room for improvement, and so...
We haven't been here very long, you got a lot of makeup.
It's coming.
Can you have an extra copy of this for us?
Thank you.
Last year, told you, or asked you for permission to go over that, after that district asset, the portable mower trailer, it's been delivered to Lafayette, to the HCC, it's getting plated and titled. It will be at that February 21st Dog and Pony Show that District 4 is doing, that I sent you guys the email on. So with that, I mean, I'm gonna have to store it somewhere. And it's a little bit bigger than we thought, height-wise, weight-wise.
How big is it?
From ground to top, about 10 feet. It's a good size.
What was pulling for it?
Well, right now, my 1500 will barely pull.
Oh, you think so?
But it's, it's gonna be tight. But part of the capital improvement plan was discussion of replacing the current vehicle I had with the 2500. I know in the Q cap, I don't even know how much is available in my Q cap to replace that, that vehicle. I know the council member working on that now, if I remember correctly, based off the last meeting. So, we'll get it figured out.
Is that a cooler?
Yes. And it is a district asset, so it'd be available in all nine counties with our district.
Okay, so this has refrigeration, how often is it fired back every day, kept?
I'll have to do monthly tests on it.
Your what?
I'll have to do a monthly test on it.
Monthly test?
Let it run for a while.
Is it one, ten, generator?
Yes. Yeah, the generator comes with it, it's already...
Can keep it on the empty?
You just don't want to run it all the time. Run it all the time and it won't fire.
Don't store your extreme, though?
Yeah.
My experience with large coolers is if they're used set for very long, they won't work.
Right, right.
Gas would be fired up.
Right.
Run periodically to make sure that it's all, well, full or free, I don't know if everybody's working on it. Now, is it a refrigerant or a freezer?
It's a refrigerator. It's designed to maintain between 30 and 34 degrees, which is the optimal, if I remember correctly, 30 and 34 degrees optimal range for...
Like 40, fix the 41 now.
But that was, that was about there.
Yeah, I hope it never...
We hope it never happens, but we've had incidents here, Gaston had that incident, actually already had 11 deaths within 24 hours.
Do you ever use the set, that one?
Depending on the situation, if it's a masked alley event and they're busy, the EMAs will be requested to move it, depending on how good the tour. But if it's, if it's one that they can pull away from, they'll usually remove something.
Is it marked or will it be marked?
As, talking with the HCC right now, it's just gonna be a claim why there won't be any markings designated what it is on the asset.
Or who it belongs?
Or who it belongs.
And is there a reason why it's gonna be kept unmarked?
We don't want to draw attention to it. I can, I can re-dress up with the district. I'm not sure if you want, something such as portable mower.
No, I don't, I don't know that it has to say that either, I just think that the emergency management Carroll County...
Right.
Would be good. I've always been clear, like all highway department stuff, or like all vehicles that we own, should be designated marked somehow that they are, people need to, I guess this is part of being open, is I want people to know that our money's being spent on something that's very good, so think about it.
Okay. Don't have to be, you...
No, 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 it doesn't have to be a big...
All right, thanks, son, but it ties it to the district, I'm insecure. So, just to recap, you know, 18 months ago, I was hired, and a little over 18 now, and the program was in dire need. Plans have been updated or rewritten or created that never existed in the past to meet the current legislative requirements. Additional SOPs and SOGs have been created that went in the past. Relationships with the county's first responders, the volunteer fire departments, law enforcement, EMS have been rebuilt, is rebuilt, but continuing to get better, which is an important part of the legislative planning, is having all those entities communicating with one another. Now, the LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, that is required by the federal government, has been reestablished, it was in a hiatus for over eight years. This year, we met all the requirements to get some money from the federal government via Tier 2, which is reporting for the facilities that have mass amounts of hazardous materials, they have to pay into it and get a portion of it back. We'll be receiving a check later on in the year for about four grand, between $3,500 and four, I'm not sure on the exact number yet. If that LEPC was still active during those eight years, you're looking at roughly $32,000 that the county has missed out on to help the first responders receive hazmat training.
They had some money left in the account, too, right, that video?
Yeah, there's about $14,000, but I couldn't touch it until our LEPC had been activated for over a year. So, we met all the requirements that set forth by the state, I can start touching that money again along with the money that we gave. It's my personal opinion, I've met the emergency management advisory councils and the commissioners and the councils' expectations of where you guys wanted the programs to start going, and I believe that we need to keep capitalizing on this and bring the program where it needs to be to ensure that we have the proper mitigation and preparedness to put that we need to ensure that the county is protected in case of a disaster. Not alone, we'll do that, but it'll increase, by increasing our operational capabilities, it improves our recovery time in the event of a disaster, and you know, during, the recovery time is the longest piece of any disaster. The longer we're down, the economic growth or any economic income coming into the county who's down, therefore, we're losing money, so it's in our best interest to get that recovery time completed as quick as we can. And I've said it before in a couple of other meetings, every month, every dollar that is spent on mitigation saves us $6 in future disaster recovery. So, we need to, we started looking at that some more, you know, some of the plans that I got that has brings up to the EMAC before I bring it to you guys, will probably guide us in that direction. So basically, that's all I had for today, unless you all have some questions for me.
I think you're doing a great job, man. When is our next meeting for the...
February 6th, $1,300 for the EMAC, and then LEPC is February 6th, at 6:00 if that's all right.
Any questions? Thank you. Pardon? Paul, would it be all right with you if we would switch you with prosecutor, Nick? Nick, would you like to do it?
Yes, I appreciate that, Paul, I got a few votes.
Yes, I appreciate that, Paul, I got a few things I got in hand this morning, so I appreciate it. I'm just here, I was part of the investigator, we wanted to get, part of the investigator job, we wanted to get Steve a vehicle so that he could travel where he needed to be without using his personal vehicle, to do interviews, to follow up on cases. Occasionally, he'll have to go to the lab, the Palmer Cox College of Lab, to pick up results for me, just all these kind of traveling things, we wanted him to have a vehicle. We had enough money in diversion to buy the vehicle, we were able to find a nice vehicle to buy, we went through Man Chevrolet, which is where the county goes to get all their vehicles, at least to my knowledge. And we'd like to title it, I talked to Toad Lesenby, and he informed me the way they do it is that they title it in the county's name, and then the county insures it, so that's what we would like to do. We're going to pay, we pay for the money, that might also pay for the call around diversion fund, but we need to be, have your approval to be able to title it in the county's name, and then your approval to be able to insure it through the county. We've talked to, oh, I forget Mr. Reed's first name, yes, I forget his first name off the top of my head, we talked to him, and he is able to do that, but of course, we just need your approval. And so that's the first thing I'd like to ask you to do, or ask you to approve, that we put the car in the county's name, and that we be able to insure it through the county.
I have looked into that, I will, I will say something if I don't like this, but normally when you buy a car, like, to give the car to the health department, the health department stays their own insurance. So I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying that as the auditor.
Who pays for the sheriff's?
That's the county general, so.
County general, so that's basically the county general because it's part of the laws, of course.
That was my hope, but if the money is going to be the barrier, we'll figure out something. You know, I don't want that to be the barrier of whether or not to get the car.
I just don't want to approve something and not have the money.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I'm in favor of this, I mean, for us interns, because he's basically an officer.
Well, I think it's a challenge. It is a county function, it will be a county employee driving it, it needs to be covered under the county policy, that's just for the county's liability portion, and we need to take care of that. Now, I know, I didn't ask you this ahead of time before you look up that, but I can't even tell you how many different cars we do have for different departments, if I stop thinking about it, but do all of them pay their own insurance, or does just the health? I mean, I know that the, I know the sheriff department does not, probably the EMS does not.
Highway does.
Highway pays all their own insurance out there.
They got different tax caps, I think that's what it is. Well, like, the health department's got their own tax, and area plan's got their own health.
Yes, their own fund.
What fund does yours promote, Paul?
We have a line item for.
That is my.
In view.
Oh, that replaced by the vehicle, that time pass. What's your plan there?
Well, our plan is hopefully the vehicle still has some value to it, and we can trade it on, in, trade it, trade it in on whatever, sorry, I'm trying to get that out. Yeah, trade it in and put it towards whatever new vehicle. We would, the hope would be, probably shouldn't be disclosing this, but the hope would be to change vehicles every couple of years, so he's somewhat undercover, so people don't get, it's a very small town, the hope is that we can switch vehicles every couple of years, one, so we can keep some value in the vehicle that we have, and two, we want him to be undercover, I mean, that's what we want.
That's a good cost for a lease.
And we, and I agree with you a hundred percent. I talked to Dave Mann about a lease, and he said, "That's fine, but can you tell me how many miles he's going to drive and whatnot?" And so we start up, they had a used car that they got traded in, it's very good shape, low miles, and he suggested, "Start with this car, track what you do, and then when you're ready to turn it in, let's look at a lease, but let's look at the mileage you're putting on, then we can have a better idea of which, which one is more beneficial." So I, I think a lease is awesome. When I talked to Mr. Mann, he said, "Maybe, but you've got to really look at the mileage and what he's putting on on a yearly basis." And so get, he said, "Get this," he suggested, "Get this vehicle, keep it for a couple of years, get an average of what he's traveling, then we'll look at the lease option."
With the lease big, or we could do that for one department, another?
Yep.
Being undercover, you don't want to bring a new car all the time.
Well.
We'll give him a little sixty, say, with Chevy, let him drive around.
I found an eighty-five Cadillac, I thought, that's what I suggested for like a thousand dollars online, but he didn't want that, so. But yeah, I think the lease is a good option, we just have to get a baseline of what his travel's going to be, before we can look into that, because when I talked to Dave, he said, "The worst thing to do is get a lease and then go over your miles." Because it just, they ding, you ding, you ding, you ding. So, yeah, I think the lease is a very good option. Right, right.
I make a motion, we go ahead and put this under county's.
Motion in a second that, no wait, what about the title we got?
Oh, yeah, the title, our name. I think it's already that way, though.
That's why I asked it.
We just, I think we just need to sign it.
Title comes to, to the county, like our other vehicles, and that it'd be under our county insurance, that is the motion, right? All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Motion passed.
Then courthouse key, I'd like to be able to give Steve Mullen a court, a key to the courthouse, and then a key to my office. I don't know if you have to approve the key to my office, but the key to the courthouse, you definitely have to, and so I'd like to be able to give him that key. He is on forty-hour work week, and so if there's a Wednesday afternoon that he needs to get in here to do some work, use our printer, or copier, or whatever, I'd like him to be able to have that option to do so.
Motion to go through courthouse key. Motion second to provide some extra key to the prosecutor's office. All in favor, please say aye.
Well, you don't have to approve.
Okay, I didn't think you had to approve my office.
We'll get, not, key to the prosecutor's office, I mean, key for, I didn't say well. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Motion passed.
Okay, thanks, guys.
While we're on this subject, um, I know area plan would like to move downstairs, his new investigator doesn't have an office, so if we move the area plan downstairs to where the surveyor is, move the surveyor across to where the lounge is, and the new lounge can be the surveyor's little office for meetings and break room.
Oh, wait a minute. Let me understand, where is the lounge going to? I'm lost in this one.
All right, if you take area plan and put them in the surveyor's office, that's big enough for them, they get enough room. Donnie's office is a secure area by itself, got that big room, put the lounge in there, move surveyor across the hallway to the lounge, then the detective can have this office up here, because it's a double door for interviews and stuff like that.
You want to put the surveyor and area plan in the lounge?
No, surveyor move across to the lounge, because he needs more room, because he don't like being separated from his first desk, because they can't talk very well. Cameron wants to be in Donnie's old office down there, then the break room and meeting room, extra meeting room can be in that little office of Donnie. Yeah, no, it's, it's in Donnie's office, when you walk in, the door in there, in Donnie's office, in Donnie's desk, that can be the breaker.
First of all, can I say something?
Sure.
Over here, the second room is really the recorder's office, so you need to include her in this discussion about that, where she's going to put her things. And the other thing is, you'd have to put another lock on the surveyor's room, because if they're gone, then the lounge would not be available, is that correct? There'd be, there's a separate door, I think. The surveyor's office can come in.
Right, there's a door there to the left, and you can walk in and out.
Right. Right, I know about the lounge, but I'm saying, when they're gone, they lock the rental door, is there a door just to the surveyor's office?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I was just asking.
Does your staff use the lounge, lounge, or did they use the lounge when we had one? We haven't had one for a while.
For a break, like at lunch, sometimes they would go down there, not on their break, because my girls go outside, but some do go for lunch, yeah.
So is that room down there, that used to be Don, the surveyor's office, office, the surveyor himself, is that large enough for that?
No comment.
I don't, I mean, you only have one or two down there at Donnie's. I'm just trying to help prosecutor out with his investigation, so we can get some news.
It is kind of, I mean, we've been making do, but Steve is a polygrapher, so he does polygraphs on occasion, he does interviews, and so we've been kind of making do and doing those where we can, but eventually, I think we will need a spot to be able to do that stuff, you know, a, a room that's private, that can close the door, that's, you know, he can do those things, he can't really do it in my office or where my girls sit, because it's just too, one, it's, it's, there's other people in there, two, my office is very, very unsecure, you know, you, my office is attached to a public office where anybody can go into, and anybody can go behind the desk in that office, because it's, it's the recorder's office, it's just part of it. So unless my door's shut, anybody in the public can hear what's going on in my office, can hear what's going on in my secretary's office. So if we're talking about a sensitive subject, we always have, or try, we try to be cognizant about, hey, we got to close the door, because anybody and their brother is in that other office. And so we, I steered him clear in the interviews in our office, because one, I don't want everybody to see who's walking in and out, and two, I don't want everybody, I don't want the public to hear the information that's, that's being disclosed. It also becomes a problem when we have undercover officers in there, when I do search warrants and stuff for undercover officers, that's an issue, and they don't like coming in there because they don't like the public to see them walking in the prosecutor's office.
So where could that be? Cannot even be accommodated in the, in the courthouse?
I don't know, I, I don't know.
I mean, just generally, your undercover officer walking in any door to courthouse or anything, seems like there's a problem there.
Right. I'm not asking for this, but other counties, that is part of the reason other counties have moved prosecutor's offices to off-site, they've made law enforcement centers or different things of that, you know, like that. I don't know if that's any better, I don't know if that's any worse, I, I, I don't, I don't have that answer. I'm not asking for that, of course, I just, we do need a secure place at some point for Steve to be able to conduct these interviews. We don't really have a good place at the sheriff's office, there's just not a good interview room there. We have a makeshift one down at the city building, but you would be embarrassed if you saw it, I think you've seen it, it's embarrassing. It's just not very good.
I'm pretty tough to embarrass.
What about the cameras in our office, I mean, that, that's a security issue, too, I can say, if they come in, we have cameras up there, that everybody that walks in.
That was addressed in the courthouse security survey, that hasn't come in.
What's happening here?
I meant his office.
The cameras that are sitting out there in the lobby, in the lottery area, that was addressed as an issue when I did that courthouse security survey, then we have to.
We don't have any cameras in our office, is there?
No, you don't.
Yeah.
The entrances to the courthouse.
Absolutely, yeah. And the courtroom, which is a little surprising that we have cameras in the courtroom, when you're not allowed to video court proceedings, but that's a whole new issue, too, probably.
I was talking about, like, hallways, they can see people walking in.
Right, oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, so I, I don't know if you can ever correct the issue, what I'm saying, and we're working on that.
We can work towards it, we can think about this, and try to figure this out. And we still have this giant room sitting downstairs there.
We can put probation down there, we can move upstairs, and they all got off.
Run that by me again.
We can put the probation in that room.
In the, in the alctorium room down there?
Yeah, and then we can move up to the third floor, and makes it easier on his office, so you don't have to walk up and down to the security papers.
Hasn't there a study done, didn't you have somebody come into the courthouse and tell you what it should be?
Yeah, we did that. We paid for engineering company to come in and, and reevaluate all the rooms, look at everything, and when they got it all done, nobody liked it. So.
I think that solved a lot of problems, we just moved them a little bit down there, have them design what they want, we got the money to do it, put Nick upstairs, I mean, he's got a private office, there's two, or three offices up there in probation, plus for the reception, what's it?
Well, there's actually, there's five, there's Karen Ball's ball, Melissa Chapman, there's two offices on the end, and then Justin Shagley has that middle office, and then there's another middle office where there's a TV for the cameras, there's another TV up there, that's where the home detention office sits, and then you have, you walk into the receptionist's library, the kind of boat, right there's the big room that that then attaches to certain four.
Since Justin Shagley's taken over community corrections, it'll all fit down there, since it's been in one direction. I don't think it'll take that much.
I, I text Steve to have him come in, I thought, I put him on the spot right now, because he didn't know what this is about, but I thought we should group in the conversation, so, Steve, what we're talking about is possibly trying to find a place for you, a more secure place, where you can do interviews and do your polygraph stuff, and they were talking about what was maybe available in courthouse and whatnot, so I, I don't know, I wanted you to come here because, are there special needs, or would it be beneficial for you to have an office that's more secure, that you can close the door, you can talk to people, you can interview him, interview them, those kind of things?
Sure, absolutely, the quieter, the better, because the location where there wouldn't be a lot of traffic, and it'd be quiet, the, oh, that's for.
Well, I suggest the dual area plan room, it's a double door, move, get downstairs and do some moving around down there in the first floor. You still have lounge.
Ange?
The museum has an outside entrance that, that would.